There it's. I can't get started.
They've already done the pledge.
Ichor.
Is there another agenda there?
What?
Another agenda for the BPW, or yeah, BPW.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to call the Board of Public Works meeting to order. We did the pledge with the last meeting, so I think we can forego that. Can we have the roll call, please, Allison?
Road Commissioner Calhoun. Road Commissioner Greenan.
Here.
Road Commissioner Joyce.
Here.
Road Commissioner Mikowski.
Here.
Road Commissioner Popa.
Here.
All present?
Okay, we have the agenda in front of us. Would anybody like to make any additions or additions? John?
I would like, under New Business, to discuss the option of getting rid of Board of Public Works with all the memberships that they have now. Unless you could just call it the makeup of Board of Public Works.
Okay, we'll add that as number one under New Business. Does anybody have anything else? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as modified.
So moved.
Seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? John's agenda is approved. We have our minutes attached on the yellow sheet. We had financial reports noodle. That's the main thing.
It looked good to me.
We have two minutes here, don't we?
April 5th and February 16th.
Sixteenth.
You want us to vote on separately?
However you like.
Separately?
She said either way.
I'll accept a motion to either approve one or both.
So moved.
Seconded. Okay, that's to approve both?
Yes.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none? It's been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes for both the April 5th and February 16th meeting have been approved. Public comment? Seeing no public. I guess there won't be any public comment. Communication items? We have no communication items. Nor do we have any old business, so we'll go to New Business, which is item number one, potential abandonment of Board of Public Works. John, do you want to have a second discussion on that?
A little bit of history on this. I approached the board five, six years ago, once Northport was completed. Chet someplace has a letter from the legal department, says what we can do. I couldn't find it, but it's probably in my pile of stuff. I talked it over with Pi and I talked it over with Will, all within the last two years or something. And he said, "Yeah, we need to do something." I said, "Okay, this is what you gotta do." Well, that never went any place. So, what I'm asking this Board of Public Works to do is look at this and look at the letter I wrote and go from there. So on that first page, it tells you the makeup of the Board of Public Works. That's like halfway down the page, self-consistent, like seven or nine members. Well, we have six, so we don't even need that, we quite don't. It doesn't matter. The next one that was highlighted in gray, the membership shall include following county drain commissioner and accept as section three, all this other stuff. And that's just a bunch of whatever. So the drain commissioner pops up all the time. Now, keep in mind that in Board of Public Works on some of these massive counties, it's a horrendous job. They're digging ditches and putting in sewers and all this kind of other stuff, and we don't have that big of a problem up here with only a few thousand citizens. On the next page, see that paragraph three? This is where the clue is. The county commissioners can remove the designated people on this with all authority on it. Whatever. They can either remove the board of commissioners, or they can remove the drain commissioner, or any other commissioner that's designated. So the law says, if you want to get rid of the road commission, you put, you only can do one of these. And the drain commissioner can be the sole person of the Board of Public Works. And there's nothing going on. And I mentioned that in my attached letter. The next page talks about the scheduled meeting. This is where we got slapped a couple times over the past six, eight years. Have to be a regular schedule, and that has nothing to do with it. So I'll go through this letter, and then we can discuss this. Reorganize the Board of Public Works. There's a need to disband the present BPW, hasn't been any activity for the past several years, and listed below are some of the items that apply. They're a big waste of time and clerical time, and that costs some money. The present road commission members make up the BPW, and the drain commissioner also is on the BPW, although it wasn't reflected. The last major activity was the Northport sewer many years ago. And the Northport sewer is well on its way and does not need the BPW. There was a little bit of iffy things going on, remember, eight, 10 years ago? And I think the treasurer can keep an open eye on stuff that's going on on Northport, but for the last presentations, it looks like finances and protecting the county's investment, because I think they are the backup signing to pay the debt if something happens. And that's why the Board of Public Works is involved. For that Act 85, section one, the drain commissioner can be the legal representative. And if something arises that needs a full BPW, you can establish it at that time. And attached are copies of this act in short. That last paragraph, "I recommend that the present makeup of the BPW shall be changed and that the drain commissioners will assume all the duties of the BPW after a legal review." Now, Chet got that legal review, and I looked through all the files of paper and I couldn't quite find it. And it wouldn't take him long to do it, but in that legal review, it said, "Yeah, you can make up whatever you want." And there's no activity going on now. If Empire decides to do something five or six years from now, all they gotta do is go back to this and establish the Board of Public Works to do it. I think this should be presented at the executive meeting by our chair. You think there's some words that's gotta be corrected, or I can send this word document to you if you think... I always talk in bullets instead of rambling on in paragraphs. And those are the bullets I came up with. And I think we should present that with a motion from here after Chet gets a legal review. Now, you may get balls too. If you guys aren't familiar with this, just see, uh, we aren't doing anything. We're wasting taxpayers' money, we're wasting per time, and we're wasting a lot of time. And with this motion, I think the chair ought to do it, and we should authorize the proper mileage and per diem. And that was required if someone is gonna do something. For the past six, eight years, we weren't doing it unless this board agrees to it. So Garth is gonna spend all morning, then we should reimburse it, and it has to be done unless we have a big motion. And then let Laura know and put it on the agenda for next week. I'll rest my case.
Okay, we can open this up for discussion. Certainly sounds reasonable to me.
There's nothing to hurt here, Craig, if the legal review says they can do it.
There's nothing going on.
Put it back to the board, you know? What we're doing is recommending the board get a legal review and take action. And if you present it, go through it that way.
I, yeah, I think I would like to see the legal review that Chet has, or if he has a new one.
Right.
Before we present it to the board, because we don't want to present something to the board that's not in compliance with state laws and any county regulations that may exist.
You can always, you can always go and get removed from the agenda. He just told me that he'd go back and try finding that letter. I could go through my pile of paper, but we don't want to miss Thursday, Wednesday, Thursdays, Tuesdays, a bit on the agenda. And if everybody agrees that Garth ought to present it, I'm thinking we should present it and get those guffaws to do something. We're wasting a lot of money and time here.
We do, you know, in concept, I agree with you. In fact, after our second meeting, somebody asked me about Board of Public Works, and I said, "I don't think it needs to exist." I mean, other than legally, there has to be one to represent the county, because the county has pledged its full faith and credit for the cost of the Northport sewer system. So there doesn't need to be ADW or BPW of some sort. But whether that's just a drain commissioner, that's allowable under the law, that's probably fine.
Yep, he can. There's nothing going on.
You know, the funny thing is, is I guess I'm the newest person on the road commission, but I didn't even know I was... I'm not aware of any action taken to appoint me to the BPW, other than I just showed up.
Right. Yeah.
You know, I don't know if the county board of commissioners has actually voted to... I guess if they vote all road commissioners, then I was, I do have to remember.
Yeah, I don't know. But I agree with what you said, you know, let's, let's see what it says, you know, legally.
Yeah.
I would rather do that before we present something. I mean, and hopefully he would be able to get that to us, you know, ASAP.
Yeah, I have no problem going, whether, you know, we don't have another meeting for another three months, so, you know, I don't know if there's an urgency to get it done for this next Tuesday. I would rather see the legal opinion first.
You can. You've got four days, and he can find that letter real fast and see what it says. If you're not happy with it, take it out.
Yeah.
But I don't want to wait three months.
No.
They're doing the budget. I could make two motions here. One is, like I wrote it, that the present makeup shall be changed and the drain commissioners will assume all duties after legal review. The second motion is I would like the chair to get reimbursed for expenses, expenses per county policies or something. There's a policy on getting reimbursed with per diem mileage. That would be the second motion. Just like we did for the road commission, and we're attending these other things. So, that's been two, and you want to take over from there?
Okay.
I'm ready to ask the motion. Now, on that first one, I don't think the motion has to say that you want to go look at it, because I put it in as late, after a legal review. If you're not happy with the legal review, throw it out. I'll make that motion for number one.
Okay, I'm a little fuzzy on what the motion says.
The motion is from us, that the present makeup of the BPW shall be changed, and the drain commissioner is to assume all duties of BPW after legal review.
Okay.
And then we take our motion in front of the board, say, "Here, the BPW..." Now, that takes a separate piece of paper, and there's a little story that goes with it, and then on the bottom is what is the action item? That has to be written out.
Okay, so the motion is to make a recommendation to the county board that the Board of Public Works be reorganized so that the drain commissioner is the only member.
I guess, I like that. I like that, saying and making a recommendation to the board.
Because we're not really just banning the Board of Public Works, we're changing the membership. Recommend changing the membership. Because my understanding is the county
Nope.
is required to have a BPW, and if they disband it, then they don't have one.
And I can send this to you on Word, and you can add that. So with that modification, I'll amend that motion to include that in there.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I second it.
Any further discussion, Jim?
I'd rather wait for the people to...
We are.
No, before. I think we're rushing. We've got... It doesn't have to be in next Tuesday. We can take, bring it up within a month, and still it will be before our next legal meeting. We, in the past, and just recently, put the car report of the horse before a little bit of research, and I think we need the research.
Well, Jim, if he...
I'm not opposed to that.
No.
If yes, then I just think we need the research.
If he gets that research done in the next four days and check...
That's a big deal. We have to... And then we have to have time to review it. We can't get handed it Tuesday morning, five minutes before the deal.
You gotta be up there.
And I think the board should feel comfortable with the legal review.
Yep, they gotta research it a little bit, too.
Any further discussion on that motion? Can we call the roll, please?
Road Commissioner Popa?
Yes.
Road Commissioner Calhoun?
No.
Road Commissioner Greenan?
No.
Road Commissioner Joyce?
No.
Road Commissioner Mikowski?
Yes.
I would entertain a motion that we seek a legal review on changing the Board of Public Works, makeup of the Board of Public Works to only the drain commissioner.
He has it.
We don't have it, though. You have it, the rest of us don't. If somebody wants to make that motion...
I'll make that motion.
Yes.
What's the motion?
Can I clarify? So, the motion that was on the floor as far as what Popa had recommended fails, two to three. So now you are voting on another motion, correct?
Yes.
Is the other motion that he still had on the floor, are we going to vote on that?
That we still have...
Did he not make two motions?
No, he made one. He made the first one, he didn't make the second one.
He was stating that he could make it into two, is that correct, John?
The second motion I was gonna make is to reimburse our chair for going to these meetings.
Okay. So you did say that out loud, was that a motion as you said it?
I make a motion that our chair... Wait, wait, but we've got an existing motion on the floor. Oh, we can't have two motions on the floor at the same time.
We already voted on the other.
No.
But he stated this earlier.
He said he was going to make a motion.
Okay, that's what I was clarifying.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
He didn't say he made a motion.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Joyce made a motion...
That we get a legal review.
That we get a legal review of modifying...
Yeah, the makeup of the BPW.
Yeah. And it's been seconded by... Calhoun, Commissioner Calhoun.
In this legal review, should be in a timely, you know, not two minutes before this meeting.
Right.
Right.
To have the ability to...
I think, yeah, I think it's important that, you know, if we're eliminating essentially our jobs from the board, that we have sufficient time to understand what we're doing and that it's legal.
Yeah. And it's gonna be in the best interest of the county residents.
Best interest of county residents. And I, I will request from the county administrator that we do it in a very timely manner. What if he produces one this afternoon? Then I'll distribute it, and everybody can review it. And then if we need to call a special meeting of this board to make a recommendation, we can do that.
Sure.
So, any further discussion? Can we call the roll, please?
Road Commissioner Joyce?
Yes.
Road Commissioner Mikowski?
Yes.
Road Commissioner Popa?
Could you read the motion, please?
It's to get the legal review prior to... To get a timely legal review prior to... Joyce, Mr. Joyce, would you repeat your motion, please?
That was to get a full legal review of the dis... Or the, what did we say that? Disbanding the... The reorganization of the BPW.
Prior to us making a decision?
Prior to us making a decision, yep. In the best interest of the Leland County residents.
John, she's waiting for your decision.
Oh, yes.
I thought she was gonna take a nap.
Road Commissioner Calhoun?
Yes.
Road Commissioner Greenan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
John, did you want to make another motion then on reimbursement?
Yeah, let's discuss this before I make the motion. I think we should make a blanket motion here that if we have to present something to the board, not necessarily you, that the board members get reimbursed per the county policy. Michelle gave me a letter on that three or four years ago. And that's when Bob and Jim and I was on it, and we got it going.
What did the letter say? Did the letter say that that was normal procedure?
It is. They got a, in that procedure on reimbursements, it says the department will authorize individuals... This is only words. Individuals to have expenses for the county policy, which is a different policy. And that requirement means every time we do something, it has to be authorized by the board, like if I want to drive down the Saginaw, the board would have to do it. I think I'm just asking for whenever we attend our board of commissioner meetings or other meetings. I'm winding up to Northport quite a bit, and I did it all for free. So, the motion could be that this board approve reimbursement of expenses per county policy for attending government or country meetings.
No, if, I mean, assuming that we...
What's that?
Assuming that we reorganize the board and none of us are on it.
Might not, right.
Then we might not need that, because we won't be attending any meetings, so...
So if you go to a meeting next week, you need that motion for per diem mileage. And they might not approve this change.
They might not.
Steve might say, "Conscience is subjective," they say, that we want according to knowledge. That's my motion.
Okay. Do we have a second for John's motion? There might be more discussion. Or more discussion, I'm sorry.
Is it legal for us to vote in something like that? To reimburse us? Or does the county commissioners have to...
I mean, since I've been, and I don't know about you, but since I've been on the BPW, I have never heard of any of us having to go to a meeting anymore.
I've never turned in any expense
Me either.
for the BPW or the damn commission.
Me either.
Me either. That has nothing to do with it.
No, I'm just making this comment.
Answer Greg's question, yes, the county commissioners authorize that, and it has to be done with reimbursement, and it's in there, and it says this and that and that, and what travel you can do, and it says attendance of meetings other than the commissioners attending a meeting in Casin, and that's their region. And that exception is in there. That has to be authorized by that department. That is the word that the commissioners approve. Like, we'll get it.
I have a comment.
Go ahead, Jim.
We have the ability to authorize to attend, we do not have the ability to authorize payment.
So the payment, just for my clarification, the payment would have to be authorized by the...
The county board.
County board.
Yes. We just authorized that, John's authorized going to the meeting. Now it's up to the county board to authorize the thing, not us as a board.
Yeah, they authorize it when they sign the expense account, and Michelle would kick them back saying, "Well, wait a minute, there's no place on record where you, where you are authorized to attend this meeting." And you gotta take it back to the board. We just never did it on either one of the boards. All the other, all the other departments have that motion.
Okay, is there any further discussion?
Did anybody...
There was no second.
There was no second. So it's dead. Motion then fails due to lack of second. Okay, um, I have my agenda here. Part second public comment period. Seeing no public. Seeing no public, there will be no public comment. Board member comments. John, do you want to start on that?
No, okay.
Oh, Bob?
I'm good.
Greg? Jim? I'm good. Somebody want to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Means adjourn.